Good evening, members of council, our retirees, as well as our employees and citizens of Williamsburg County. We are going to do something a little different today. I am waiting on to ensure that we have our other connections in order, our Facebook connections, as well as those that are on our county conference call. At this time, media and marketing team, IT, do we have anyone that can advise us of the sound on Facebook? Anyone on teleconference? Good. For the purposes of COVID, as you all can see, we are all petitioned off, as well as there are probably, there are about five air purifiers that are going around in the facility to keep the air clean. So, we are, the council members that are up here now, you can, it is safe for you to remove your mask if you wish to do so. Other than that, we will carry on with the business. We have obviously selected this meeting, and I'm glad that we are back in office, or on our benches in our respective areas now, due to the fact that, obviously, COVID is running rampant. So, I'm very pleased that we are here this evening. I'm most pleased that we are here this evening to honor a group of individuals who have served Williamsburg County for many, many years. Although COVID has definitely affected our county, our county employees and our citizens, we wanted to make sure that we gave our retirees the same treatment as we would have, just to honor them, as in, as we have done in the past for them. So, unfortunately, we have to do things a little different this time. But it is most needed that we definitely recognize you for your accomplishments. So, again, I thank you. I also want to start, also say, thank you for the families that actually had to deal with you all while you were working with Williamsburg County in various capacities, because we all know that you couldn't do what you do without the support of your families and your friends. So, for that, we like to say thank you to them as well. As you all know, we recognized Mr. McKnight last year, and again, this is our opportunity to recognize the rest of our great retirees. How this is going to work, and I'm going to give out specific instructions, due to the fact that I need to try to do everything we can in keeping everyone safe. Once your name is announced, you will then come up and receive your bag, or your items that are your gifts. Once that is done, a photo will be taken. Council will not gather with you all to take the photo. You may take the photo with your family member that came with you, and we will keep those photos, obviously, and publish those. Again, please, take it for love. Council members will not get together and take a group photo as we have done in the past. Once you receive your bag, you can do one of two things. Either you can sit and wait for the rest to be given their bags, or you can immediately take your bag and exit, stage left, out of the doors to where you receive a meal for us to go. Once this portion of our meeting is completed, then everyone that is in here that is part of our retirees should be gone, and we will go ahead and allow the rest of Williamsburg County citizens to come in and participate in the regular council meeting. Are we good? Does everybody understand? All right, let's get going. Members of council, is there anything you wanted to say prior to us getting on with the names and the gifts?
I just would like to say, thank you for your service and all that you have done, and just know that you mean so much to each and every one of us, and we could not have done anything that we've been able to do without you. And again, thank you for your service.
I'd just like to echo those, I thought, thank you for your service. Good luck to you. Stay safe.
Ditto to both of those gentlemen's comments from District 4. Thank you.
District 5, you're now entering the best years of your life. Enjoy them, and thank you for servicing us.
District 6, I've had the pleasure of working with all of you for the last 10 years, and it's purely, surely been an enjoyable experience, and wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, members of council. As we begin this journey, now, I was kind of shocked at some of these years of service, but I'm just so proud that you've managed to stay in it with us for these times. Our first retiree is Mr. Rufus Burgess. As you all know, he came, he is still working with us in Public Works. So, Mr. Burgess, would you please come up and receive your bag? Members of council, can we give him a round of applause? So, Mr. Rufus, you just take your bag and turn around and hold it up, and we'll get a photo. Thank you. Our next retiree is Mr. Elvis Byrd. He is, he is from the EMS family. He has 25 years of service. Thank you. All right. And obviously, Ms. Naomi Darcy, who was a part of the supervisor's office, will be greatly missed. She had 10 years of service in Williamsburg County government. So, her gift is being picked up and will be provided by Councilman Lemon. So, let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Jacqueline Hales, Ms. Jacqueline Hales, she has a long history, and I'm trying to remember this off the top of my head, y'all, believe it or not. No one scripted this information for me. But Ms. Jacqueline Hales, she has a long history of working in various departments in Williamsburg County government. So, she ended her career at the Water Department. So, Ms. Jacqueline Hales leaves us with 20 years of service. And she, her gift will be delivered to her as well. Our next person is Mr. Curtis Johnson. Mr. Curtis Johnson worked, or finished his time off in our Recreation Department. Your photo. We need these photos. You want to take it and go. Thank you. Our next retiree is Mr. Brutus Jones. He has finished his career off in the transit, Williamsburg Transit Department. 16 years of service. See here. We will make sure he gets his gifts. Ms. Nanette Jowers, she is from, she finished her career up in the alcohol and drug, alcohol and drug department here in Williamsburg County. She had 10 years of service. Next, Ms. Joanna Latson. Joanna has also worked in various departments in Williamsburg County government, and she finished her career up as the addressing and mapping technician for Williamsburg County Government. 27 years of service. 27 years of service. Ms. Wanda Lynch, who is still, currently working with us as well as Joanna, in EMS Department. She, again, left our area, or retired in the, from EMS. She has 20 years of service. Y'all know, affectionately known as Mama. Ms. Carolyn McCarty, she finishes her career in emergency management and 911. She has 19 years of service. And as you all know, we didn't get an opportunity to finish giving, to finish up, because we just got some of our plaques and items in. So, again, we'd like to also recognize Mr. Andy McKnight, Sr., with 40 years of service.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next on our list, and I believe he is the longest-running retire, he's the, he has the most years as a retiree, and that's Mr. Harrison McKnight. 44 years of service. As our coroner, Williamsburg County Coroner.
44 years?
Next on our list is Ms. Ruby McKnight, who finished her career up in our Building and Grounds Department. She has 28 years of service. We will make sure she gets her gifts. Our next retiree also finished his career in building and grounds, and is still working alongside of us as a contractor. Mr. Jesse Parker. 26 years of service. Our next retiree, who has also worked in various capacities in county government, and who is definitely someone that we're definitely going to miss on the second floor, and that's Ms. Eleanor Presley. 22 years of service as our payroll, or I should say, Our next retiree is Mr., none other than Mr. Richard Scott, who's with Williamsburg Transit. Next on our list, on our list of retirees, who has served in multiple capacities and still serving in multiple capacities, none other than Mr. Jeff Singleton. 7 years with Williamsburg County Government. Thank you. Our next retiree is Mr. William Stakely, Jr., who's, uh-oh, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, Miss, you know he got to say something. Hold on, because I want you to have your moment.
My thank you, doctor, I believe you. And all the reasons I've been here, I have to talk that when you're given a gift in public, you thank the public.
That's right.
So, I would like to thank you for your exceptional leadership for the seven years that I've worked here. I've only worked for you, and you've brought me to this moment. So, for the depth of changing heart, I thank you.
Aw, thank you. You know, I thought you was going to tell them the story about the winter storm, PAX, when you came to work the very first day and never went home. I thought you was going to tell that story, because we were stuck in a building. Our next retiree is Mr. William Stakely, Jr. He finished his career out in the Assessor's Office as one of our, one of our surveyors. Thank you, sir. Our next retiree is Ms. Deborah Ward. She finishes her career from the magistrate's office. 18 years of service. And we will make sure she gets her, her gifts. Last but not least, a person who has served with our coroner, Mr., I don't want to say X, but our, our past coroner, Mr. McKnight, Mr. Verno Fulton, whose many years of service have been in working alongside our coroner. Also, he is a member of the Economic Development, the Economic Development Committee, and he has 22 years of service. And I believe, Mr., I think Mr. Verno already got his gift, but we want to photo op with you.
I'd just like to say that I ain't, I ain't get no gift. But that's nice. You know, I enjoy working with Williamsburg County for the time I've been there, and I hope that the things keep on going the way it's trying to go. We all need to put our hands together and try to assist any way we can to help the citizens of Williamsburg County and County Council. I appreciate everything that y'all have done for us, and I hope y'all appreciate everything you've done for y'all.
That's right. Thank you. Let's give all of our retirees another round of applause. If there is a correction needed on your names or your years of service, please contact, the contact information is in your gift bag. Again, we thank you for all of your many years of service. As they begin to exit stage left, we will prepare to call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting for today, which is February 1st. Is there anyone out in the lobby that wish to come in and join us for our regularly scheduled council meeting?
Thank you all.
Thank you. No? Okay. All right. The invocation officially calling this meeting to order. Our invocation will be done by Mr. Miller.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you that in you there is no male or female. You created all of us in your image, and your call goes to those you predestined. Teach us to accept and respect the women you call to lead. Allow us to hear you in their voice. This we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next order on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled council meeting that was scheduled January 19th, 2021. We need a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled council meeting that was January 19th, 2021, please signify by raising your hands. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Next on our agenda is ordinances. We have third and final approval of ordinance number 2020-2024, an ordinance to amend the existing fee in lieu of the Advilarium Taxes Agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Sunflower Solar LLC as sponsors or one or more sponsor affiliated to provide for a fee in lieu of an Advilarium Taxes incentive and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. We need a motion for final approval.
Motion for third reading?
Yes, sir. Final approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Next on our agenda is for third reading and final approval of ordinance number 2020-2025, an ordinance authorizing a mutual cooperation agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and the Williamsburg County Development Corporation, and addressing other matters related thereto. We need a motion for a third and final reading.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same. The motion is carried. We have second reading of ordinance number 2021-01, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 2020-2012-12, and authorized with the replacement ordinance the Williamsburg County Aeronautics Commission, setting forth the duties, responsibilities, functions of the commission to provide for the appointment of its members and election of the officers and members. Second reading. We need a motion for second reading.
Motion to approve, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Supervisor, if you would. As you know, after the last reading, first reading, I said I need an opportunity to review this, and I contacted Mr. Jenkinson, but I understand Attorney Barnett drafted this. I reached out to Chairman Williamson today, and I think I've got a grasp, but prior to third reading, I would just ask that I at least get an opportunity to talk to Attorney Barnett, make sure I have an understanding of where we are.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All those in favor of a second reading, please raise your hand. And those that oppose, the same. The motion is carried for second reading with the information that has been requested by Councilman Floyd. All right. We have, the next order of business is second reading of ordinance number 2021-02, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2015-007, to further define a connected customer in Section 2B and C thereof. If you want us to kind of go through this and explain what happened during the, a review of this ordinance, or I should say, a challenge by a citizen in reference to this ordinance, we can discuss that with you now and give you some clarity. Billy, are you prepared, or you want me to discuss it? Mr. Jenkinson, can you just step up to, just pull the mic back so we can hear you? That one right, I think that one's on right there. Or is that one on?
No, we can't hear you, Billy.
Now, is this working good?
Yes, that's good.
We had a peculiar situation with a home in the Salter's area that, I guess, for lack of a better description, fell through the cracks for lack of an adequate definition of what a connected customer was. We felt it best to resolve that by amending the ordinance and clarifying exactly what a connected customer is defined as in our ordinance. Now, what this means is, if you don't have water and it's past your home, there's a fee, there's a cest. But if you're a connected customer, you don't pay the fee. Now, what we had was a situation with, I think it was sort of an abandoned home, and it was, it was ill-defined. So, in paragraph 2B, when we defined connected customer, we added the language, took a little word "and" out. A connected customer is defined as one who has paid the necessary fee for connection, is connected to the water system, and is a customer by January 4th, January 1st of each year thereafter. Okay? Now, it goes on to say, "and is paying at least the minimally established monthly water bill due to authority." In other words, you got to be a real connected customer paying a bill to be considered a connected customer. If you don't pay a bill, and you've had your water turned off, you're not a connected customer. So, we wanted to clarify that. Under subsection C, we added the words, "all the structure is unoccupied for the majority more than six months of the year." In other words, if that house has been unoccupied for six months, and nobody's paying a bill, they're not a connected customer. And so, we wanted to clarify what happens when, say it's a rental house, and people no longer occupy it. Well, it's been occupied, and they claim that, "well, we are a connected customer." Under the definition, you are not a connected customer, because you're not paying a water bill. That's what we tried to address. Questions?
Very good. All right. So, we are in a second reading of trying to, to provide for more clarity of this, of this particular ordinance. So, we need a motion for second reading of ordinance Chair, you said, second?
Second.
Or you made the motion, chair? Okay. Second. Okay. District 5, you made the second?
Yes.
Councilwoman? All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of second reading of ordinance number 2021-02, zero, yeah, 021-02, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Next on the agenda is second reading of ordinance number 2021-03, an ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly-owned and operated industrial business park between Georgetown and Williamsburg County. Such industrial park to be geographically located in each county and established pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated Section 4-1-170 to provide for a written agreement between Georgetown County and Williamsburg County to provide for expenses of the park, the percentage of the revenue application, and the distribution of fee in lieu in Advilarium taxation and other related matters. It's the pleasure of council for second reading.
So move, Madam Supervisor.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those, all those in favor of second reading of ordinance 2021-03, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, the same. The motion is carried. Next, we have committee report. The committee met last week. The committee met last week. We had three issues that were on the agenda for us to discuss. One was the vital aging, vital aging community, as well as EMS, and the water and sewer rates. I think we need to start with, since we have a little bit more detail, detailed information that need to be provided to the body, in reference to water and sewer, we're going to start with vital aging. We are waiting at this point, currently awaiting a revised agreement from the Vital Aging Board that will be in line with the grant requirement for them to begin the demolition work on the Old Kelly Hospital. The lease agreement will exclude the other conditions that were not placed in the agreement as part of the grant requirement for them to accept the grant. The grant requires that the county will become an owner of the property as a means of a pass-through operation that's usually done with some grant, with some agencies that have to get grants, but the county is acting as a pass-through for them to get that grant. This time, the county, and after that occurs, the county has the right to sign the lease back over to vital aging without penalty. We are now waiting on the updated agreement. I believe they are, they have a meeting, a special call meeting that is scheduled. If you look in your packet, it is scheduled for February 3rd at 2:00 PM, in which they will discuss it. They have, they will secure an attorney to assist with the, with drawing up the agreement. So, at this time, there is no action. We are currently waiting on them to make the decision of how they're going to formulate this new agreement with the county. Any questions, members of council, at this time regarding that, that was discussed in the Finance Committee meeting?
Yes. Dr. Wright, you did say that when we met and we discussed some parameters as it relates to the vital aging, there were some conditions that were not a part of the original condition that was added. And I would just want to make it clear, that's why there was a little hesitancy, because some of the things they were requesting, and they put in there, was thing that was astronomically, and it would have cost us. So, now we are waiting for them to take those additions out of there, and then you'll deal with it, right?
Exactly. As you all know, just as a recap, the grant arranged- As you all know, just as a recap, the grant arranged, the, the grant that they were awarded, they actually had to get an extension on it due to the fact that an agreement had not been met with Williamsburg County. However, the only thing that was listed in the grant agreement was that we obtain ownership of the property so that they could receive this grant funding. That was the only thing that was in it. And as you stated earlier, there were other things that were added that were not part of the lease agreement, which ended up delaying their project. This project could have been easily completed last year, sometime in this, in the summer, could have been done, but because those conditions were added, obviously, that put council and Williamsburg County, and it, and, and a, kind of delayed us, because how are we going to come up with some of the issues that you have been raising? And those, those extra conditions have been added on from a June letter into a July letter, they were changed. So, we want to make sure this time that we take this step-by-step and do what is required of the grant so that they can at least get the demolition work that completed, and not lose their funding source.
So, Dr. Wright, I just wanted to say that that financial meeting is online on the Williamsburg County Government Facebook page?
Yes.
And also, just to put out there, because some of the citizens have raised concerns, thinking that Williamsburg County and council government did not want to support this, and that is simply not the case. We just cannot get behind something when you're adding on additional requirements. So, please go back, I urge everyone to go back and watch that video that took place, it is on the Williamsburg County Facebook page.
Yes, absolutely. So, I hope we can come to an agreement so that the seniors can still get the things that they, that they desire, as well as county council do their part, and I believe we have always been pioneers of their effort. So, moving along, so I just wanted to brief you on that. The other information that came to the Finance Committee, and you all know that's made up of myself, Vice Chair was, as well as Mr. Floyd, or Councilman Floyd, are all on the Finance Committee Board. One of the other things that came to us was the EMS write-off issues that we've been facing. Now, we understood that there are a lot of write-offs that are conducted as a result of recommendations that are made by our different, by our organization that does our billing. And once those, those recommendations are made, they are sent to finance, and then council votes on them. So, council have asked that our Director of EMS ensure that we don't have repeat, you know, repeat people that are continuously not taking advantage of it, but actually continuing to ask for more assistance and continue to get write-offs. We've asked her to start documenting that and making sure that when, when we get that information, that we're able to make a more informed decision as to how often this is occurring and why it's occurring, because essentially what happens is, the county ends up losing money when they do these write-offs. Is that about the?
Madam Supervisor. Don't we have a, a, a collecting agency that do, collect these bad debts?
Yes.
So, at what point does this get to us? Do, do this go to collecting agency first? And this is something that they can't collect?
Mm-hmm, and then they will ask?
There's no remedy, remedy for them? The only remedy then is left for us to forgive the loan?
Yes, and no. There are some, some organizations out there, such as the hospital, that can actually take your state tax money and things like that, and, and keep that so that if you, you know, you have a bill that's due medically, they can get their money back. I am not for certain, and Mr. Jenkinson, you may want to jump in on that, I just know that we do have it, an agency that collects for us all of our billing. We pay low country billing, pretty good money to collect on our bills. So, you want to have, you have anything to add to that?
I'm familiar with the hospitals program, and it's a specific statute that allows the hospital to do it, and I, I just don't know whether that would extend to an ambulance service or not. I don't, I doubt it, but I'll, I can check on that. But, the problem is, most of these bills are relatively small, a few hundred dollars. And the problem is, how much money do you spend trying to collect a few hundred dollars because somebody doesn't have the money to start with, and the campaign to start with? It's sort of like a dog chasing his tail, you end up going nowhere. And it's, it's, it's just not a situation that's business productive in, in producing money, once the bill collector tries to collect, it's just hard to collect money from somebody that doesn't have any money. And that's, that's the, the bulk of the problem right there. Now, do we have people that abuse the ambulance service? Yeah, and that's a dilemma, because if they're called, they have to go. But then when they get there, well, mama needs turning into bed, and we can't turn into bed. And that goes on frequently, and that's a run. And it's a call, and it's, it's just a situation that is just not good. And how, they go check on that, the EMS, to see just what they can do, but it's, it's not a whole lot of it, but that's, some of that goes on.
So, I think what Finance Committee has asked that, you know, we, they, we do document, these, begin to create a record on this, and everything will be dealt with by case-by-case basis, we can agree upon that. So, I think that's what it was, you're right, EMS have to go, they have a responsibility to respond to every call, and I don't think, sometimes we do get people that have just fallen hard on our luck. I don't think that that's what council is saying, that they don't want to, to write off. But when we get into a situation where we have a habitual person somewhat taking advantage of our system, then we, that's something that we need to take note of. All right, the next order of business that we discuss is the water and sewer. We met Water and Sewer Department. We met with our financial advisor, Mr. Larry Finney, and Finance Committee requested that he have a one-page explanation of the potential increases that, that would impact our citizens. I hope everyone has had the opportunity to look over the one-page list, or one-page recommendations. He have on there three different options. He did recommend one of the options, let me grab that, that we look at. This is not something that is up for any vote this, this council meeting, however, we need to start making some decisions and looking at things and evaluating them. Did you all get the three options? Yeah, I got it. Okay, I can read them. Should be, go past the pink side. Yep. You should, go all the way towards the back. Is, yeah, towards the back. So, there were three potential options, and, and this is in regard to our current water, as you all know, our current water situation and projects, as well as a few future projects, and for us to make sure that in the event, that we do want to embark on some additional water projects that we actually have, the money set aside to be able to do that. So, again, there's, there's three options that have been offered, and I believe they are as follows. Just before vital agent. Mr. Finney's recommendation was that going up on the water availability fee, a hu, an additional hundred dollars, and going up on the rate, the monthly rate of the regular customer rate, fourteen dollars, will put the county in a position of where we would create a savings, as well as be able to get the other projects that are on the books right now completed. And I, mind you, these projects have already been bid out, and things like that have already occurred, preliminary, I'm sorry, preliminary engineering work have been done, so we are somewhat obligated to get those projects done, if not, we're going to end up losing money. These projects were already in the works for the last five to seven years, so we have to make sure that we make good on them, if not, we're going to end up use, losing all of our engineering money for that. So, he made some real recommendations.
Madam Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
I see the fee that says increase to one hundred dollars. Is that the availability fee that's on the taxes?
Yes, it'll go from one eighty to two eighty.
So, it'll go from one eighty to two eighty. And then the fourteen dollars would be added on to the cost per gallon, or per however many gallons?
The average bill is twenty-seven dollars, that's average. It could be twenty-two, but just taking it from an average, from the average, and you're looking at adding an additional fourteen dollars, I believe, that was the correction. In the spreadsheet, it was fourteen dollars, so you're looking at our customers will be paying forty-one dollars a month on their water bill, which is in line with what the rest of our adjoining towns are paying for water. And after history, historic data will support that we have never had an increase in our water fee. In Williamsburg County, I think it was suggested in one of our meetings that we did, but history proves that we did not, we've never had one since we had the water project started. And it was a part of the grant requirements that we go up incrementally every year, ever since they began to take these loans out, but we did not do, we did not do that, which is why you're looking at some of the, these increases being so large right now, because we are behind, and we were definitely supposed to be doing this as a requirement of us receiving the loan money that we received. So, I am hoping that council members can look these over, these options, talk to your constituents about them. Obviously, that's important, and that's key to get the information out, so that the citizens have an opportunity to, to discuss it with us all. Any questions? Okay. Got a question? Okay. Never mind, I'll wait till later. Okay, I'm hoping that from last meeting, everyone had an opportunity, or, well, from what I hope, you all had the opportunity to be able to open your emails, to get all the list of all the boards and commissions that you all appoint people to. If not, that information is in this packet, and it'll give you some time, because again, no action will be taken on that this, this, this meeting, but I would like for you to please make sure you get with your people. One of the things, I, or get with your people, or ask new people, or whatever you need to do, if you want to change your committee, or some of your board members for the various places that you've selected them, you can do so. One of the things I do have for action on here is the approval of the application. Last council meeting, I presented you with an application, an application for board members. This will allow us to keep good records on who our, our members are, their information, so that they're not just being appointed and saying, hey, you're appointed, you actually have an application that you fill out to give us some information about you. So, if we're ever challenged in any decisions that are being made, or any recommendations of the board, then at least we have, begin to have a paper trail on who these people are that we selected for these various, various boards. So, the one thing I, I need, I would like us to take action on is the approval of the application. So, it'll give you an opportunity when you're going out there now, and recruiting people, or you're getting, going to keep your existing members, that you can take the application for them to fill out and return it, and we can place it on record. So, at this time, I am asking for the adoption of the Williamsburg County Board of Commission's application. We need a motion for adoption.
Motion for approval and adoption of the application?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick question, Madam Supervisor, is that for, you want all existing appointees to fill one out, or just new appointees to fill one out?
If you want to keep your existing ones, then they still need to do something so we can put it on record, but if you get new ones, they too need to do the application as well. It's just us to have an application on file for everybody.
Okay.
And this has been the way of South Carolina Association of Counties, their recommendation for, was for us to go about it in this manner. All those, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same. The motion is carried, this application will be copied for you all and placed in your mailbox, so when you begin to speak to your appointees, you'll be able to get them to fill us out, and they just have to return it back to us, or they can return it to you. The next order of business is the supervisor's report. And I'm going to change the, well, yeah, Williamsburg County Policy and Procedure. This, I, we issued this out sometime last year, we really are trying to get moving on it, as far as what our county attorney has stated, it just takes a mere adoption of the personnel and policy procedure. Now, once, once, if the policy and procedure is adopted, it will go through a, through a proofreader, it will be looked over, evaluated on the content, making sure we have all our, it's neat, all our lines, grammar, everything is put together in this booklet, once it is approved by council. I didn't want to go and do that ahead of time, and something happens, and you all don't want to approve it, or it's parts of it that you want us to look at. So, after, you know, don't pay attention to what the draft looked like, it will be grammatically corrected, it'll be proofread through an editor, and we will be able to publish a good document that we all feel good with. None of the content will be changed, this, the styling of the content of, of the book will be changed. So, going through the motion of this, it takes an adoption, so we need a motion for approval or adoption of the new county's Personnel and Policy Manual.
So moved, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion at this time about the Policy and Procedure Manual?
Uh, yes, Madam Supervisor, you said, after these changes are, are made, the necessity to correct statements and everything, that, that the manual itself will be the one that we agreed upon?
Exactly. No, what I wanted to say, no content will be changed in it, it's just the appearance of it, and making sure that we're publishing a document that is free of grammars, free of spelling, spelling errors, et cetera. Once you approve this, this is what it's going to be, it's just, your styling is going to change on it, it's just going to be edited.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of the new Personnel and Policy Manual, content only, whatever is in the content, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. The next order of business is our budget calendar. As you all know, that time of year is upon us, and we have to start getting into the budget season. So, we are asking you all, and have sent this out for you all to look at it and approve it, so that we can begin the process of developing our budgets for our various departments, as well as the other agencies that we support. So, has everyone had a chance to look it over? This time, it is the pleasure of council, we need a motion for approval of the proposed budget calendar.
So moved.
Second, Madam Supervisor.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried, we've adopted our proposed budget calendar. Also, under the supervisor's report, I wanted to make sure I review with members of council something that I stated back in the other meeting before we, a meeting that was held in, I believe, December, and that is Operation Cleanup. Operation Cleanup is designed around specifically us focusing on our litter issues, as well as our ditches and our road issue. Operation Cleanup was set to go into each district, spend at least three weeks in each district, three weeks in each district, straight. What we were, what our idea was, is to go through and get as many roads rocked, dirt roads rocked as possible, and clean out as many ditches as we could, and pick up as much litter as possible. We started in District 7, and we are working our way down, all the way down to District 1. We started in District Seven because District Seven is the location where we tie in to Florence County, um, their, their main drain line. So it was easier for us to begin to clean from that direction down range to the Black River. And then we would pick up what was after that. So we started, that was a, a good start point for us. Plus, that's where we house, one of our watersheds is located in that area that we really need to have cleaned out because that area has always had an issue with flooding. So, along with other areas, but there was a, a, um, a very, um, a significant amount of flooding that was occurring in that community. And that had a lot to do with our watershed as well as the issue with how the drain system works from Florence County into the, down through our drainage areas down to the Black River. So that was the purpose of us starting there. Um, I do understand that in previous meetings, council members felt that they did not understand the concept, but it was easier for us to work in an area for a longer period of time than for us to skip around and virtually accomplish nothing is what we have been doing. So the idea was to go through and do a real good thorough job and to move to the next, um, the next district and then the next district. When there is an emergency that has arrived, and it has arrived in different districts, we have removed, have moved equipment to those districts so that we can deal with an issue. Now, what constitute an emergency is a situation that deems it, a potential affecting a dwelling or affecting a roadway and create, and its potential to collapse. Those things are considered emergencies. The mere fact that someone has a ditch that is full, that is every area in Williamsburg County. So, no, we may not send you over because there is a ditch that's full. We know that when we get to your district, we will make sure we deal with that issue. But there has been some issues where there has been an emergency that we've had to dispatch units to. We were in District One for a week. We were also in District Two cleaning up one of their areas in, um, one of their areas that was causing and creating a, a hazard to some of the houses down range. So I just want to ask members of council at this point, is there any recommendation that you have? Is there any issues you have or concerns regarding Operation Cleanup?
Uh, yes, that's supervisor, you said we, you started in Seven?
Mm-hmm.
So you'd be going six?
Yes.
Five, four, three, two, one?
Mm-hmm.
And you do have, uh, situation where there is emergency that you can move the equipment to other district?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Supervisor, I, I just, just a request. I think it's a good project, just if, uh, if, when you enter District Six, if you would notify me, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That was one of my concern that, but you, you addressed it when you said that you have emergency crews that will pull off to come and, and, um, and take care of emergencies.
Yes.
But a- also, you said that there, you, you, you described a minimum. You said at least three weeks?
Yes.
In each district. But there's not a maximum. You couldn't stay in one three weeks or you couldn't stay in one two months.
For example, District, Four is gonna be the max. District, and the only reason, actually, it was supposed to be Three. Three weeks only. But we had gotten so much rain and we had so many emergency situations that we had to address in other districts that we had to pull people away, thus taking away from the actual mission. So we delayed it another week. So the week, and it's actually this week, we should have been pulling out of District Seven last week. And of course, now we have the rain. So, but we do know on Friday, we will be packing up whatever we have done and we will be moving to District Six.
You'll be going to Six?
Yes.
And in other words, another way of addressing is 15 working days in each district?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
And some weekends.
Okay.
But you will be coming.
And, um, but I, I, I understand, I think that's a great idea, but you do know that if you, because if you stopped at one district at the end of the year and you spending almost a month in another dis- district, it can almost be seven or eight months before you get back to that district. So how, how are we gonna communicate to these citizen that we have put in to play something that's gonna help them? But those roads that we say maybe not emergency to us, that those people have to drive in and out every day, especially in the rural area, that it may be eight, eight months before you get back down to them, before you do anything to them?
Well, on an average of three weeks, that project was scheduled to be, the whole project was scheduled to be completed by, I believe it was June was the end date that I gave you all, which got us in time for, um, the grass cutting season. That's when that really is gonna ramp up. And that's when we know we wanted to have everybody back into the respective districts at that point. Um, again, if it's an emergency road, like we've had issues with some of our roads, we've gone in there, we pulled crews off. The problem is, is in an ideal situation, if we had, if we were able to afford just a contracting group that that's all they did was come out and do roads, then we would be in a good, good place right now. But the issue is, is that we don't have enough people to do this, nor equipment to do this. So we're having to kind of do the best we can and deal with emergency situations as we can. So I, you know, I wish we had more people and more equipment that we could, we could kind of make a, a good dent in it. I'm not pleased with our progress. I really wish we could have been more, we could have done more. But unfortunately, you know, just because of the issues we have and that it's not, it's not getting done the way I would like for it to be, but it is becoming, it is helpful helping out some of the people get things done.
It is.
Madam Supervisor, I would again like to thank you, uh, and as you know, I'm, I'm one, I, I'll call you every day.
You sure do.
You know, talking about these roads, ditches and everything else. And, and so I've been asking for us to do something different, uh, than just the four days. And so I really do appreciate that. Um, I'd love for us to, to go up the ladder than down the ladder, but hey, I, you know, whatever we can do to make sure, as long as I know I can call and, and you all will come running, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Um, but again, thank you for at least, uh, looking at the different change to try to get some of this stuff done.
Yeah, 'cause you used to always rain when it was your week, so, you know. I know. The list is growing and, um, you know, we're, we're just doing the best we, we can with what we have. Um, but again, I ask that you all, as our council members, once again, and I'm thankful that Mr. Floyd did say, tell me when, or Councilman Floyd, tell me when you're in my area so you can keep your eyes out. And if there's little things that you see that just maybe needs some more work, then please, that stuff, you need to bring that to our attention because I can't be everywhere.
And, and I would just say, um, Madam Supervisor, I, I support what you're doing, but I think we all need to be mindful and work together. You know, s- some of these districts, these roads can't be fixed until summertime. The winter season, there's no point going in there. I have a couple of those roads myself. And so I hope during the summer months, we'll all work together and try to get the, the, the wetter roads, the ones through the river swamp and stuff like that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions about Operation Cleanup? Okay. Um, one, well, okay, so let me finish up with that. I, I done kept y'all too long today. Um, Cleaner, uh, I could say Cleaner, COVID. As you all know, county government opened today to the public. Um, kudos to the first floor team, the accessories office, the collector's office, Coz and, Coz's office, the treasurer's office and auditor's office. Um, we received today, a little over 120 citizens came in today for service. So they really worked with the shortage of staff. I, I just want to commend them for their hard work, um, that they, that they're experiencing. We are gonna stay open. I think it's gonna work for us. Everyone did things safely, our citizens, for the most part, were understanding, um, so what we had to do. But they, you know, I think they felt safe, so I'm very pleased with our opening. As you all know, we've been having some situations with internal COVID issues. We are working through those issues as best we can. Um, it is taking, taking a toll on staffing. Um, but I just, you know, know that we're gonna continue trucking on and continue to split our teams up so that we'll have a team on reserve in the event something happens to a primary team or a secondary team. So we're gonna continue to do that. I don't believe that our citizens in Williamsburg County is taking COVID-19 or any of the, um, any of the new strains seriously, Williamsburg County. Um, as of today, we had 77 COVID-related deaths according to DHEC in Williamsburg County. It is serious. We have to begin to actually, as council members, have to continue to talk to our people about it. This is beyond the ideal of politics. This is life and death.
Yes, it is.
And people are dying. Um, I'm often, I've put param, placed parameters in place for county employees and elected officials have gotten on board with many of them, many of the ideas to help protect all of us and keep us all safe. We are still purchasing personal protective equipment in order to continue to keep everyone safe. Um, at this point, we're, as far as our budget, we're doing okay with that. I will have more numbers next, next meeting on what we actually came out with, with our reconstruction plan. Um, my preliminary numbers with our finance team, Williamsburg County will no longer have to rely on FEMA money. So next year, we, next budget season, we will start off with no FEMA money, no dependency on FEMA money. That's how much money we've already saved thus far. So I'm very proud of the team and I'm proud of everyone who has made the ultimate sacrifice. I believe we do have some form of a cost saving somewhere, um, around the area of 200K. And I look for us to be saving even more next year. So, proud of the team, proud of everyone working with us on this. Um, at this point, I have nothing to add in reference to, um, anything that's going on in county government. For the good of the order, members of council, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Yes, I do, Dr. Wright. Before we adjourn, um, this is just a concern. I noticed that, and I, and I agree with what you said. I don't feel as if a lot of citizens in the county are taking this pandemic seriously enough. Um, I know some counties have issued ordinances, um, and they're not well-accepted by some, but others realize that it's something that must be done. I think in Williamsburg County, I'm not advocating to go ahead and put in any kind of ordinance in place or make anybody do anything. They should do it on their own. But what concerns me, and I mentioned it to you, uh, Jess, you've been to any of these basketball games at the schools. Okay, I'm proud to, how many people are in those, in the gym? Because it really is concerning me.
It, it started off, uh, with what I thought myself was too many.
Mm-hmm.
But where they at now is, is decent.
You figure it's 100?
I think that's what they care for now, but it's 100 at first, I think it's only around.
It's normally anywhere between 100 and 50 to, to 200.
But, but e- even, even at that? Yeah. And, 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 and who regulates that, Jess? You know, how many can come in there?
There is, they got a certain amount of tickets.
Yeah.
And those tickets are sold, that's it. They don't have anybody.
But the school district is handling it. They're determining how many would be sufficient for a particular sized gym.
I don't know whether that's the school district or high school.
It was, it was actually DHEC. It was actually DHEC that came in and, and looked at the size of each of the, uh, gymnasiums and said, okay, this is how many people that you can actually have in that can, that'll have you to, at a safe number. And so, um, you know, pretty much the only thing that the schools are selling are tickets enough to, uh, cover the cost, you know, to pay for referees, um, security and things of that nature. And, and like you said, it, it's still probably too many people.
Yeah. It just concerned me, Torrance, you know, and I, I, I know, well, education is important, I, I can see that. But extracurricular activities, when we have a pandemic going on like this, and even if 50 people is in that gym and, and three of them have the virus, of course, there's much potential for it to spread. And I just don't know if the school district took that thing seriously enough, you know, or not. And it concerns me and I'm gonna, when I get a chance, I'm gonna talk to the superintendent to see what's the rationale? What can we do any differently that would mo- more, better protect the citizen? Because when I passed by going to Manning and I saw the parking lot full of cars, I came back by and I kind of peeped in the gym and it looked at me like there was too many people in there. Uh, and it just concerns me and I don't know if they got fans sucking the air out or, or whatever. But even so, if they got the air conditioner, the heater on, that air is being circulated across plenty of people. And if some of them had the virus, there's potential for it to spread. How are we gonna ever get a handle on this thing if we're not gonna be serious enough? I, I just wanted to put that, put that out there. Um, and if anyone know what, what an, our solution could be, please, uh, share it with the superintendent. You don't have to share it with me. Share it with the superintendent or somebody that's in control and can do something about it.
Supervisor, just one question on that very same line that, uh, Councilman Wood was talking about. This, uh, new strain from Africa, did, uh, DHEC ever say what county it was located in? Or what way it was discovered in?
They just gave like PD region. They just gave a region. Mm-hmm. Or, you know, whatever region is actually happening.
Last thing, Supervisor, so we can go, anything on those COVID shots?
So. Yeah. I'm gonna get you at this meeting. So as you all know, uh, the county has been trying to, I should say, the county with the, with the help of Ms. Judy McCray, our EMS director, has been trying to, um, get approval for DHEC for the county to actually begin doing the, um, doing the vaccines. However, we have not been approved yet, so we are actually under the auspice of DHEC. And DHEC is doing, um, the vaccines, again, it's for the 70-plus and those who are in the A1, 1A and, uh, um, and I believe they'll start real soon with some of the ones that are at the 1B. But definitely, they're trying to get through the first group of people that, uh, require this to be done. I believe Tuesday, I posted on Facebook as, you know, as they shared it from the emergency management site, that, um, they will be doing the vaccines for 70-plus and those who fit into that group. Um, but you must make an appointment in advance. You can't just show up, they're not taking show, walk-ins. You, you will, um, have to sign up in advance to come to that, uh, particular place to get the vaccine.
Okay. Dr. Wright, do you know whether each state has, uh, full autonomy to do, to designate what age bracket they want to do first? Because I know we're doing 70. Um, Florida, some places in Florida, they're doing 65. And other places are doing, uh, other ages.
I'm not sure about that. I always thought that that was a, a national standard, but if you're, if you heard it somewhere else, I hadn't done enough investigation. I just know that, um, pretty much making sure that we get everybody that actually is gonna be directly impacted. If they don't get the, the vaccine, um, is pretty much where I just follow it. I don't know what other, yeah, states and how that, that works for us. But I do know, um, Governor McMasters is definitely trying to put, really putting pressure on, um, them to get this, get more vaccines in, in South Carolina. He's doing his part, really, really working hard to get that squared away, so.
Dr. Wright, I just wanted to add for those that are watching, um, to schedule that appointment because we sent calls out to our residents in District Five. You can call 843-355-6012 to schedule that appointment.
Good. Thank you. Um, they also have a hotline that will be published on, on the website to help you. So, because they've noticed that the concern, or the, the booking of the, of the appointments were so cumbersome. And they have now made it a lot easier to where you can actually speak to live people on the phone. If you look on our social media websites and we got some of our council districts that actually haven't and council members that haven't, please share that information as to how, what the citizen needs to do. Make a phone call, you'll actually talk to a live person and they can walk you through that process. Because it is, and it has been a, a very cumbersome task for them. Any other questions for the good of the order? Hearing none, um, we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Guess there's no discussion. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, members of council and Williamsburg County citizens.